Is everyone ready? It's Wednesday, August 25th, 2021, 4:00 PM, 4:15 PM. This special meeting of the Board of Commissioners is called to order. City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Mayor Hendricks?
Here.
Vice Mayor Price?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Andrews?
Here.
Commissioner Hudson?
Here.
Okay, first is public comment. I don't know that there's any public comment here unless staff wants to make a public comment on anything. Yes? Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to make a comment. I went through all the applications that we received and talked with every single one of the tenants that were here. And it was really nice. I met some really nice people. I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the commission. I'm sure you're aware of it and everything, but it's just something that I was aware of. This is the fourth time I've done this in the last 10 years, or 10 and a half years, I should say. And I just wanted to be known that, you know, we represent the city. And whoever we put in that office as city manager, he represents us also because we are his bosses. And I think it's very important that we keep that in mind all the time. There could be a situation that the management might come up with that maybe you don't agree with. And you make a suggestion and he says, "Well, I can't do it." So right away, everybody gets mad and upset at the city manager. But the thing of it is, is that he has to follow the rules whether we like or not, and he will follow them. And I feel like it is our choice as commissioners to make the decision to put someone in that office that is going to do the job that we need him to do. And therefore, I suggest that we bring this to a final close. I feel like we've been pushing along and it just seems like there's always someone who's always getting ready to leave. And I just feel like it's time we bring this to an end and close it. So I think it's real important that whoever we pick, it's going to be very important that this person is going to represent us and the city and everything the city stands for. And that was just my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the agenda topic, obviously, tonight is, select the top three candidates for the city manager's position. And something I wanted to mention, we're right here in budget and we're going through a lot of things right now with the city. Whoever we get, I would like to see a contract for either a year and a half or two and a half years so that we get the contract away from the budget process. We shouldn't be going through this in the middle of the budget. So that's, that's just my thought on it, something to keep in mind as we go forward with this. Floor is open.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Sure. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to offer a multi-year contract to Mr. Daniels for the city manager position with the contract negotiated by the city attorney.
Well, first, we're going to pick three candidates. That's what we're here for today. And if someone wants to make a second on that, that's fine, but that's not what we're here for today. There is no second. So the floor is open for discussion.
Well, I'll give you my one, two, three. And I don't know if we, how we want to score this. Like, a number one point, a number one slot gets three points, and then a number two slot gets two, a number three slot gets one from each of us, and then at the end, we total the points? Or do we just see the one, two, threes from everybody and it may just be evident? I don't know.
Well, if we're doing, yeah, if we're doing one, two, three, we're going to be doing three.
All right. Well, I'll give you my top three candidates. And in, and I'll just give them to you in order, in case anyone wants to do the one, two, three thing. Lee Staub, Jeffrey Durbin, Lawrence McNaul. And we need to quit misspelling his name. That N is capitalized. After the M.C., it's McNaul.
So is one your first choice, two is your second?
Number seven is my first choice, number five is my second choice, and number six is my third choice.
Commissioner Hodges?
Okay. Number three would be Lawrence McNaul. Number two would be Jeffrey Durbin. And number one is Bob Daniels.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yeah, I'm, you know, I probably went about this a little differently than you guys, just in the thing. I, instead of asking the questions that were given, I kind of had like a five-topic conversation about leadership, staff relations, budget, grants, and the ability to be apolitical. You know, truthfully, I mean, I actually loved the candidates we got, so we deserve a round of applause for that. Mine is similar to Commissioner Price's, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Price's. Just a little tweak, I had Jeffrey Durbin, number one, Lee Staub, number two, and Lawrence McNaul, number three.
Commissioner Hudson?
Okay. Mr. Daniels, number one, Mr. Staub, number two, and Mr. McNaul, number three. Or I guess those might be backwards if you're going to add points, but I hope we don't just do a one-on-one.
No, we're just doing the one, two, three, I think, at this point.
This has been the hardest decision I think I've ever made. And that is, Lee Staub, number one. Robert Daniels, number two. And Timothy Day, number three. So if we'll go through each row and total them.
Well, do we, okay, so we are going to use the points system? Or low points win? And don't forget, we may choose somebody who doesn't want to come here and work for whatever we're offering. So we need a backup, you know, obviously, and a backup. So I guess if we're going to total the points, the lowest score, well, no, that's not right because then somebody who only got one vote would win. And we can't do that. So. No, add number. So why don't we, like, that's what I was trying to establish to begin with. If we give the number one choice of everyone three points, the number two choice, two points, and the number three choice, one, then we can choose the highest number. You know what I'm saying? So for instance, Mr. Daniels would get two points plus three points plus three points equals eight. Timothy Day would get one, right? Durbin would get two plus two plus three, right?
Which is, what was your total on that one?
Seven.
Okay.
McNaul would get one, two, three, four. Lee Staub would get three, three, two, and two, ten. I don't know if that satisfies anyone or if we want to debate or think of it different. I mean, here, Mr. McNaul got it. Four of us want him in the top. And he came out with the lowest points, doing it in this manner, which I don't think is very good.
Well, yeah, and we can discuss it. Mr. McNaul was not, I had four picked here. Mr. McNaul was not in my list, and there was a reason. And I think one of the reasons was that, it must be over here. In the interview, Mr. McNaul told me Madeira Beach had no plan. And that kind of bothered me because frankly, I thought we had one. So that's why.
What do you mean, comprehensive plan?
Any kind of plan.
We don't have a comprehensive plan. The board never approved it, I think. But anyway.
So anyhow, that's, that's why I didn't pick him, and I know everyone else did. Though I do see that he's had experience in, in obtaining some grants and whatnot. But he's had zero coastal experience, zero, I don't think even Florida experience, as I remember.
McNaul is, he's running a county.
Okay.
Yeah. Let's see, I'm sorry.
A lot of these run together, so.
Yeah, he's, he's running McCullough County, population of 27,730. He's got a master's in public administration. Two years as a Florida city administrator, and he's got the ICMA. I liked him.
Okay.
I got a suggestion about him too. He lives in Colorado now.
No, we're talking about McNaul.
McNaul? Oh, I'm sorry. I was talking about someone else here then.
Durbin and Staub live in Colorado right now.
Okay, hold on.
Yeah, I guess he's in Wachula now.
Yeah, he's just southeast of us. But you're right, it's not coastal, but it's certainly Florida.
Yeah.
It's not a small county. I mean, it's not a desolate county.
Just east of Sarasota, I think.
So, Mr. Staub, I think his credentials speak for themselves from all I saw.
Yeah, if there's anyone who could bring people together, it's that guy.
Yeah, I think he was very, very qualified. Another one that doesn't have Florida experience, but at the same time, he's had experience all over the world doing different things. So, and Mr. Day?
He doesn't have ICMA. Well, we'd give him an opportunity, I think, wouldn't we, to?
I just feel like if it's in, in our book that they have to be, they, they have to be.
Yeah, I missed that.
Yeah, he's not ICMA.
Okay. And Mr. Daniels has.
He's got everything. He's got it all.
He's got all that.
And I just, I just feel like, you know, we have someone who we depend on now. And we don't have to do anything special. Like, if you bring someone else in, we're going to find them a place to stay. You know, all this is going to react, and all this is going to cost money. We have Bob Daniels here now, who's got a home. His wife, I think, is planning on coming over. And I just, I did, I read through everything. And Bob Daniels was the best one I could come up with. He was the best, everything I read here.
Well, he didn't even make my list.
Me either.
And.
That's okay, you know.
I know, I'm just telling you. You got to tout his pluses, now I get to, you know, tell you why. And I told this to Bob to his face even. I thought he was a little too political. Even before I was elected into this job, we had a discussion about that. And I don't agree with a lot of the employment decisions made over the last two years. And I don't care what it costs to get a good manager in here, the best manager we can get. That's not mine. But I do agree with offering someone a two and a half year and then two years thereafter so that this doesn't coincide with budget time, our contract.
Okay.
I mean, four of us have got Lee Staub in the top two. I, I think he's the first guy we offer and see if he's willing to come down here and work for what we're, what we're offering to pay. And I guess that's another thing we need to talk about. What would be our, what salary would we offer? I mean, Bob would do a raise if he stayed on, in my opinion.
Well, whoever, whoever it is, we need to have some discussion on what we're willing to pay. Not give them an open-ended question of what's it going to take to get you here? So that we've got a point to negotiate from. And I'm sure everyone realizes that this is a small community and, and we're not going to pay what Clearwater or St. Pete is going to pay.
I don't even know what those cities pay. But we could offer him $135,000 and see if he takes it. I mean, Bob may not take that. Jeff Durbin may not take that. I mean, we don't know, but.
Okay.
I mean, it's $10,000 more than what we're paying Bob now, and like I said, we'd, we'd increase it. Generally, I would think.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, please.
You know, a lot of things have been set up here, and I'm not going to get into an attack because I don't think it's right. But I am going to tell you that, you know, these five topics that I talked about, there's a reason I talked about them. It's because this is stuff that we're lacking in. We don't, if, and maybe I'm looking at it through a different set of eyeglasses, and I totally respect everybody's opinion up here. But if you guys think, or if anybody really thinks that this city is running at its ultimate capacity right now, and we are the best that we can be, then I'm completely overmatched here because I just really don't see it. The hires that have been made in this past two years have been atrocious, atrocious. I mean, take Megan out of the mix, but Megan wasn't even his first choice. He offered the job to somebody else. So he would have been 0-for-3 with director-level positions. Two of them are gone already. We just pointed out in my last budget, he offered somebody $8 an hour that had no, $8 an hour more than the low end of the position with no experience at all. He took, you know, poor Jamie, he took him out of, and put him into a managerial, and offered him $6 an hour more than the low end. Okay? That is just a really atrocious job of spending money. Politics, why is he, I mean, you, you watched what he did to poor Andrea Gamble, okay? We watched that. We watched it unfold. Oh, I'm not, you know, it was all politically motivated, okay? Got to stay out of politics. The only way that a city manager can survive is to stay completely out of politics and just say, "Hey, look, sometimes they got to tap us on the shoulder and say, 'Hey, go home, I got this.'" You guys, the legislation, legislative portion or the administrative portion, okay? We were looking at the budget today. We saw just irresponsible mistakes that, "Oh, I'm going to scrub it now and I'm going to look now." No, no, you were supposed to look two years ago when you got here, okay? You know, so, guys, if you think that this city is moving at the pace it should be, and all of the director level, you know, if you've talked to some of the staff, if you think they're responding to this level of management or this type of management, then I, I just think we're not talking about the same, the same topics anymore, okay? Of the six people that I interviewed, I didn't interview Bob because I know what we have with Bob, okay? Honestly, I found all of them to be more credentialed, besides maybe Carl Brown. And honestly, if I was, if we were running really smoothly and we're going to take a shot on somebody, that guy's grant experience alone would have, would have made me look that way. But the four bottom ones on this thing are grossly more experienced, okay? To say that this is the best candidate that we have and try to make a motion here before we even talk about it? It's absurd. It's absurd. We got to do some thinking, guys. I mean, there's, there's a laundry list of things that I can go through. I'm not going to go through them all, okay? But you got to put on your thinking caps. This is a huge decision, and I agree completely with Vice Mayor Price. It really doesn't matter how much it costs us to get the right person, okay? That's our job. If we've got to spend a couple of bucks to get the right person in the door, let me do it. Let me do it. We just can't sit in mediocrity, okay? And sit here waddling in mediocrity and continue to think it's okay. It's not. Not by me. I mean, maybe for you guys it is. It's not by me, okay? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get emotional, but wow.
Okay, the reason that I did that was stability. Having somebody for the same boss, for the employees. And that's, that's my biggest fear about picking somebody new. Is you can look at a resume, you can look, talk to people, but you don't know what they're like as a boss. And, and that's, that's what scares me the most.
Dave, can I, can I say to you, to see you really quick? You know, Mr. Daniels got hired? He was the last one standing in the room. We didn't even interview him, okay? Because the board at the time, the majority of the board at the time, didn't think we had anybody on staff, anybody on staff that could hold the reins until we made a proper decision. So we went and hired somebody without even, even a proper interview or vetted them at all. They hired him right there on the spot, right in the audience that day, okay? So I agree with you. Stability is the most important thing. But the most stable thing to have done at that time would have been to promote somebody from within just to hold the reins until we got the ship straightened, okay? We didn't do that. And I, my personal opinion, the ship's gone totally off course. I mean, the handling of COVID, I mean, there's, I, I could sit here for about an hour and tell you, but I can guarantee you, and I'd like one of you to say it, what accomplishment has been done in the last two years? Give me an accomplishment. I can give you 19 things that's been done wrong. Give me one accomplishment that's been done. And if somebody says, "Oh, well, we've strengthened our relationship with the businesses in town." No, no, that's, no, that hasn't happened. This was a person that was putting, that went to the police and the firemen, okay? And was going to put a Gestapo raid mob into bars to make sure people were standing six feet away from each other.
Excuse me, Commissioner.
You're not allowed to speak during this hearing, Bob. Please be quiet.
I do have a voice.
Okay. Again, let's, let's make this totally illegitimate then.
Okay, let's make it legitimate. Let's talk about facts. The issue that you just discussed, we had kicked around in a staff meeting. It never went anywhere. But yet, you keep wanting to bring it up. You can slam me all you want, okay?
Bob, you really want to do this? Do you really want to do this?
No, I don't want to, sir.
Because it's going to get ugly here in a second. You really don't want to do this?
Just please speak factual. That's all I ask you.
Hey, Bob, why did you hire a private investigator to investigate me?
I've heard enough.
Well, Bob, John.
We're not, we're not arguing.
Okay, he's not allowed to talk during this hearing. I can't believe that.
That's true.
Don't I have a voice? Okay, I apologize, Mayor.
Finish up, Commissioner Andrews.
I asked him a question, okay? If we're really going to get into the meat of this, why'd you hire a private investigator to investigate me? For a, I mean, you know, a completely unsubstantiated charge? Please tell everybody why you spent taxpayer money hiring a private investigator to investigate me.
Commissioner Andrews, perhaps you should have interviewed Mr. Daniels and asked those questions in your interview.
Well, this is a public hearing, Mr. Mayor, and I'll tell you what, if we're going to talk about it and he's willing to speak, let him talk. Let him tell, let him tell everybody why he did that and how anybody on this board would have sat here for the last two years and had any communication with him at all after they did something like that.
Mr. Mayor, do you want me to answer?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. There was a complaint filed against a commissioner for sexual harassment and stalking. And the investigator had to be somebody from outside. It costs, it costs us $500. That's my understanding. It costs us $500. And the individual that said that a complaint was filed, said that, well, that she never really complained. And that's when I put a stop to everything.
You hired a private investigation company to investigate me without my knowledge. If a complaint is made against somebody in this city, you tell that person so they have an opportunity to defend themselves. You know, and Bob, you're going to sit here and tell me that I knew about this? I found out about it because I looked in my own damn personnel file. You didn't even tell me about it. Now, how do you justify that? How do you justify, we're here to be the stewards of the money of this city. How do you justify spending that money when you could have done an investigation internally? Why didn't you do that? Is this the first sexual harassment charge, honestly, that even that person filed? No. How can you, how can you do that to one of your bosses and sit here and say, "Okay, so whose, whose decision was it to hire the private investigator?"
Mayor, may I answer?
Yes.
Okay. The decision was mine. When you're faced with an allegation such as that, and as detailed as the details were given to me, nobody here could. I'm glad you think it's funny, sir. I don't.
Bob, because you know what? I've sat here for freaking two years and watched you lie on this dais to everybody up here. So I am completely over this. But you guys, if you, if you think that this city is running in the right direction, let's keep running. I'll tell you what, that is incredible that you can sit there and do that. You know who I want to be the city manager? Harry S. Truman, the buck stops here. That's what I want. I don't want somebody that makes a, why didn't you tell me about it after it was done? If it was such a credible allegation, why didn't you tell me about it? You, you, the investigation went on, and you never even mentioned it to me. Why wouldn't you do that?
Mayor, may I answer that question?
Yes, please.
Okay. We do not have constant dialogue. We, we talk to each other via text. There is no communication between me and you.
Right. And before, was that after all this happened, Bob, or before? When did I stop coming in to see you? So because I didn't call you every day and come to your office every day, you decided that it wasn't important to tell me about an allegation that was in my personnel file? You didn't think that that was pertinent to me? Really? I'm done, guys. I don't even want to talk about this anymore. You guys do what you.
May I?
Yes.
I don't make a habit of going into everybody's personnel file, particularly, excuse me, particularly my bosses, okay? So if it got into your personnel file, that was not in my direction.
Bob, you hired the investigator. You hired the investigator. How do you do that? Bob, you hired the investigator. You hired the investigator. How do you do that? You hired the investigator. And you're sitting here making excuses that you think it was a good idea.
I'm not making an excuse.
Well, would you do it again today? Let me ask you that. If the same thing happened to another, another, another person on this board, would you do it again today?
I would probably do it differently. I learned by that.
And did you ever apologize to me about that?
I apologized to you about that.
You know what? Here we go again. I mean, you're just going to sit up here.
No, I'm telling you.
When did you apologize, Bob?
I tried to even use an intermediary to get to meet with you so I could apologize to you. Okay? I don't know what I can do other than trying to communicate with you in every way I can.
You're doing a great job.
I'm done.
Well, I think the goal of this meeting was narrow it down to three and interview them, and then decide who we wanted to make an offer to, correct?
That's correct.
So we've got our three.
May I make a suggestion? Can we add the fourth person? Because if, if that, I think the, I, I do agree with your scoring system, but if somebody picked, four of us picked the same person and that person's not getting interviewed again, and they were in the top three of everybody except for one person. So obviously, four of us, the 80% of the board wants to re-interview.
That's, that's fine. I agree with that.
That's good. Thank you.
I agree with that. I will say, we have got to have city management that gets along with the commission. That's all I'm going to say about that. So we will interview Mr. Lee Staub, Mr. Bob Daniels, Mr. Jeffrey Durbin, and Mr. Lawrence McNaul. So if you will set those up, I would think we can do the long distance one by Zoom. Is that all right with everyone? Just bring our laptops in the day that we do these and we'll interview them as a group? Can we, can we do that? Okay.
And can you also, all right, let's decide on the opening price because we may lose one or two or three based on that.
Okay.
Was there a, was there a price in the?
No.
No, there was not.
There wasn't even a range.
Compensation, you can measure it with.
Right. And I, I would say probably the 135 is a good figure. What I would like to see taken out of that is 20 weeks severance.
Agreed.
Uh, even if we.
What, drop it to 10 or something?
Eight or 10.
Because severance is going to be, I mean.
Yeah, eight or 10.
Okay.
What I did notice on all of these applications is that two-year tenure, tenure seemed to be pretty common.
Yeah.
So what else on the vacation package and whatnot? I think, uh, four weeks is what we have now. Is that correct?
So Mayor, these are all things that would come back to you. Once you've narrowed it down to one individual, then we would come back to you and seek some direction.
Okay.
Um, I, I think that you're going to be spending some time here and, and you may not be, um, you know, helping your situation to finalize. You know, maybe if you wanted to just throw out the salary range and see if they're interested in it 135, and if not, what, what their, um, what their starting salary would be, maybe that would be helpful. But all the other stuff, we can, we can negotiate.
Okay. Mr. Lilly, can you, when you set up the interviews, can you bring that forward, the 135?
I sure can.
Okay, thank you.
Can we just clarify the interviews? Um, you're doing it as a group?
Yes.
Oh, yes?
Yeah.
I think we have to.
Want to do this as a group? Okay.
So it's going to be a meeting?
Yes. It has to be open.
Okay. And when do you want them?
I think we, we, I know my calendar, I chalked off a whole week. I think it was, let's say.
Commissioner Hodges, you've been here for quite a while. Didn't, didn't your last meetings, weren't they open meetings?
No, they were not.
They were not? Okay.
So we're going to do the same setup as last time?
Well, what does the commission prefer? Do y'all have any thoughts on that?
You have men here as a group, or we do it as a group. Well, one hears as an answer, the other person can change his mind to something else.
Correct.
So that's the reason why we wouldn't do it as a group. We would do it as individuals.
Okay. I guess we'll be doing them individually again then.
Like last time, and you want an hour this time, correct?
Yes, I don't think 30 minutes was enough. And we'll, I don't know that we need a, I don't know that we need set questions either. We just ask our own questions and get that gut feeling of what we think.
And this is for next week, correct?
I, I have on my calendar for August 30th this week, interview commission, city manager finalists. And I think I, I have that on every day from August 30th through September 3rd. Actually, through September 2nd, I do.
Well, I'll do my best to do them all on one day like we did before.
Can I ask you a question, please?
Sure.
On this time, when you set it up, can you set it up with a time schedule? So we're all not here at one time that, you know, each other.
I can try.
Specific time to get with them so we know what time to come in and talk with them.
Yeah, let me think about that. I'll, I'll see what I can do.
Okay, thank you.
And let's all try to stick to the one hour, knowing that what you're doing is breaking into somebody else's hour.
Yep.
So I may have been looking through papers. Did anyone decide a date?
I'm open anytime between September, I'm sorry, August 30th through September 2nd. I do not have the 3rd available, unfortunately.
That's good for me. Commissioner Hodges, is that good for you? Okay.
There is a Tuesday.
How about your Tuesday?
31st is a Tuesday.
31st?
Yeah. 30th is a Monday. So now we're down to Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, August 30th, and September 1st and 2nd.
September 1st, we have that 4:00 PM budget meber, meeting on the labor.
Oh, yeah, we do.
Unless we move that to, to a little later in the day.
We can make that till 5:00.
Make it till 5:00?
Yeah, make it a 5:00 o'clock one, yeah.
Okay.
And I can, I can be here, of course, a couple of these guys are out west, so they're not going to want it 8:00 and 9:00 o'clock in the morning, but I can be here 9:00 AM. I mean, I'm not a.
Okay. City Clerk, did you get that 5:00 PM meeting change on the 1st?
Yes, September the 1st budget workshop meeting, making it to 5:00.
Make it at 5:00. So all day before that, um, is open for everyone. So we'll just have to, we'll wait to hear back from you. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, we have an audio problem. Can we take five minutes?
Sure.
Test 123, test 123.
This meeting is ready to resume at 4:58 PM. Okay, next, uh, next on the agenda is extension of.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
We have conflicting notes. Monday, Wednesday, or Thursday? Is that what we came up with? For the interviews?
Yes.
Okay.
And I did like what the city manager said about, tell them what the offer is, and then if not, what would it take, kind of a thing. I don't know how you said it, but it sounded pretty good. How, what would it take?
I can do that. I'll have a conversation with each one.
Okay.
Okay. Next is the extension of city manager contract with Robert Daniels for 30 days or more, or get an interim city manager. Extension of contract to be provided before the meeting. And with that, floor is open as to whether or not we want to have a contract extension or whether we want to just have someone fill in as an interim.
Excuse me, Mayor. Could you tell me when the last day is for our city manager? Because you don't want to renew this too far in advance.
August 31st.
August 31st?
And I think, uh, the only changes were to take out, um, take out the things that had to do with the.
Severance and due process and things like that.
Right. And it's, all it is, an extension of the existing contract, if I can find my copy.
Mr. Trask, did you see this? Or did you do this?
He did.
I guess is the question.
Yeah. So as a starting point, I want to let you know that I did prepare this. I prepared it in a strikeout underlined format so that you could see, um, what was being revised, taking the original employment agreement and making some amendments or revisions to it. And I'll just go through them very quickly for you so that you understand them. So the prior agreement said that it was going to continue until September 1st, 2021. This agreement says it will start on September 1, 2021. It'll be continued on a month-to-month basis. Um, I've stricken out the provisions relative to notice requirements, the 60-day notice requirements, and it's in a couple of different sections in the current agreement. So that's the first portion. Um, I also took out the, um, language relative to an automatic 12-day, um, benefit for unused sick leave, um, or vacation time, rather. So it would automatically have, based upon the way the agreement had previously provided, on the one-year anniversary or the anniversary date, he would automatically get that. And so what I wanted to do was just to back that out so it'd be done on an accrual basis so it wouldn't be automatically 12 days.
So, and it, it's in there now, so we need to strike it, correct?
Well, so the, what it shows is, is I've taken out the words and each anniversary date thereafter. That fixes that problem.
Okay.
So in addition to that, there were some notice requirements in the suspension termination severance, uh, provision under section 7. I've taken that out. And then I've taken out the severance pay provisions because Bob has gotten to the end of his agreement, so there would be no severance on this month-to-month basis. So I've taken that out. Um, in addition to that, I've taken out the language relative to, well, what happens in the event of his early termination? Those are paragraphs E, F, and G. Um, since it's not going to be an early termination, those wouldn't apply. And lastly, under the resignation paragraph, I took out the 60-day notice requirement. So, um, other than that, his employment agreement, the other terms would remain in effect. So, um, Clara has taken that and provided it to you in a final format. She's written at the top, I think it was her handwriting, final changes made. That's the clean version. And then the changes in blue, that's the, that's the version, strikeout underlined, that I had prepared. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I'll read over it. I'm, I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with it, and I think I, I would like to keep Bob on during the next two months, or at least however it takes us to resolve our city manager issue.
May I just ask a request?
Yes.
Uh, we did exactly what you, you had mentioned, Mayor. My only request is, uh, you know, with renting month-to-month right now, um, you know, there's usually a notice provision I have to give. So maybe just starting it out, the first month, if we could do it instead of 30 days to either 35 or 40 days, just so I can give notice if you all at the end of the 30 days say, well, okay, we're done. I just need to, you know, again, I'm, I don't want to hold you to the 60 days that we, we had in there, but I just, some consideration. So.
Okay, that's, that's okay with me if it's okay with the commissioner.
That's fair, yeah.
Yeah. Doug, you got a problem? Okay, yeah, that's fine. So do we want to extend this contract, or is there any discussion regarding having an interim? If we want to extend this, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to extend and amend the employment agreement with Robert Daniels.
Do we need to go ahead and put that extension for five or 10 days in there?
So I would ask that you have a motion to approve the amendment to the employment agreement as provided, with the exception of the additional, whatever number of days notice to Bob before its actual termination.
What, how much time do you need?
10 days.
10 days? So you need 40 days rather than 30?
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay. Okay. So I'll need a motion with that change.
Okay, that's right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment to the employment agreement with Robert Daniels, with the exception of giving him 40 days' notice of the end of the contract.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Price? Yes. Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
No.